If we could please take our seats. About to start this evening's meeting. And before we start, as a reminder, I want to let everyone know or remind everyone that our meetings from this point on will be recorded and re-televized at a later date. So please be cognizant of that. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to thank our IT department for installing the equipment, doing an excellent job, and to make mention of the hard work that Ms. Lindsay DeLong did on it, wherever she is, and especially Ms. Glennetta Griffin, who did a tremendous job taking on this project and moving vigorously forward with it. So, let's give them a round of applause. Okay, we're gonna have the invocation this evening from Pastor Reginald B. Newman of Fountain of Faith. No, that's not correct. Pastor Pete?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm saying Pastor P.
Pastor Daniel Perry.
Pastor Daniel Perry.
Better known as Pastor P.
Pastor P. Also from Fountain of Faith. Okay, Missionary Baptist Church in Riverdale, Georgia, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If I can get everyone to stand, please.
Let us all bow. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for allowing us to come here and to assemble to help empower our community. So at this particular time, we ask, dear heavenly Father, that you enrich us, dear heavenly Father, that our concerns be met, and all of the people that come up, dear heavenly Father, that has a concern, let them know that we can agree, we can agree to empower our community through education, through spiritual beliefs, in the name of our heavenly Father. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Commissioners has made four amendments to tonight's agenda, and I will read them at this time for your benefit. First, the Board will be adding a resolution, which is numbered 2014-117, authorizing the county to enter into a facility use contract with Clayton County Public Schools, providing terms and conditions under which the county will use a school facility to host a public meeting to discuss public transportation. Secondly, the Board will be deleting item number 18, which is found on page eight, and that is ordinance 2014-101, an ordinance to amend the county's code, specifically, Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part II, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1 in General, by deleting the existing Section 2-6 travel outside county and substituting in lieu thereof a new Section 2-6 out-of-state travel to appeal conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions to provide for severability, et cetera. Next, the Board will be deleting item number 32, found on the last page, which is page 11, Resolution 2014-115, authorizing the county to enter into an agreement with Millennium Film Works, Inc., providing terms and conditions under which video production services will be rendered to the county, and that's the production of a 32nd commercial to promote the county for tourism and business. And lastly, the Board will be deleting item number 33, which is Resolution 2014-116, authorizing the county to enter into an agreement with Foster &amp; Foster, PC, for services to be rendered to the Tax Commissioner of the county in conducting judicial foreclosures of tax liens and to provide services to be rendered to the Clayton County Land Bank. And I'd also like to note at this time that the executive session held tonight will pertain to litigation and personnel matters. I'd also like to mention at this time that each of the presentations will have a maximum time limit of 10 minutes, and you will be timed. We will go ahead and ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendments as mentioned.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda with a noted changes.
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
Okay. Next, the Board will approve the April 15, 2014 regular business meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from April 15, 2014.
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
Okay, at this time, we need a motion from the Board to go into a public hearing. We do have one individual who signed up, and the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit input and comments regarding the abandonment of property consisting of approximately 0.312 acres of right-of-way formerly known as Old Riverdale Road. May we have the motion to go into public hearing, please?
I'll make the motions, there second.
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, it's unanimous.
Okay, and we will call for at this time Mr. Morris Dillard, who has comments regarding the abandonment of the former road known as Old Riverdale Road. Mr. Dillard, are you present? Okay. All right, I guess since we don't have anybody else, we'll go ahead and make a motion to go out of the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, second, it probably moved in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, it's unanimous.
Okay, next, we have a public comment, and I'll pass this along to the chairman. We have several individuals who've signed up for public comment, and each of you will have a maximum time limit of three minutes to speak before the Board, and you will be timed as well.
Dr. Henry Anderson.
Good evening, Commissioner Miss Anna Singleton of District 1, Vice Chairwoman, Attorney Judge, Commissioner Miss Shayna Rooks of District 3, Chairman in Chief of the entire Clayton County Municipal, Metropolitan, and Unincorporated Areas, Mr. Jeffrey Turner, Commissioner Ms. Gail Hamrick of District 2, and Commissioner Mr. Michael Edmison of District 4. I implore all of you to express my appreciation, gratitude, and thanks for televising the Clayton County Board of Commissioners meeting and archiving it for future viewing. This is a great empowerment tool for the Clayton County citizens who can view the Clayton County Board of Commissioners meetings in the privacy of their homes, especially those who cannot make the meetings. It is also a great empowerment tool for you all, because when the meeting is over, you, when citizens present their complaints, issues, and concerns, and giving you their frustrations, discontentment, displeasure, dissatisfaction on any issue, you can also review this in your office in the privacy of your home, and can you, Chairman Turner, along with Chief Anderson, can call the Department Head, Supervisor, Director, Chief into your office to get the city of the Department that the citizen has problems with, and after reviewing and making them also view the meeting, if they didn't attend the meeting, making them view the viewing, and then thereby you can solve their problem to the satisfaction of all of us. So this is a great tool for you all also to re-see again, you know, and when you're well rested after the meeting is over with a clear, rested, and open mind, and can make and can help the citizens also. As I said at the April 1st, 2014 meeting, we, the citizens of Clayton County, by electing our five of you to your positions, and cease of great and extreme power, authority, control, command, and governance, as Clayton County Commissioners and the Chairman, as granted by the Clayton County Charter, to run this county and all related matters pertaining to this county in the best interest of the citizens of Clayton County and the county as a whole, that will help further advance and keep the county moving on an upward trajectory. As I've also said, your range, scope of power, authority, command, control, and governance is so wide-reaching that even though we, the citizens of Clayton County, elect the constitutional officers such as the Sheriff, District Attorney, Tax Commissioner, Judges, et cetera, you have oversight because you control their budgets, in a sense, by either approving or submitting them, thereby giving a strong hand either to their success or, you know, their ineffectiveness if you don't adequately fund them. In concluding, I state again that it is my sincere hope that all of you, as the Clayton County Board of Commissioners and the Chairman, will use the power, authority, command, control, and governance that we, the citizens, gave you when we elected all of you to your Commission and Chairman seats of great, extreme, wide, and far-reaching power, prestige, stature, authority, command, control, and governance of Clayton County, to serve in our best interests, working with us, and carrying out the will of the people in Clayton County, who only want a safe, secure, clean, desirable, appealing, attractive, presentable, pleasant, pleasing, and pleasurable place to live, work, play, and enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Larry O'Keefe.
Tonight, I just want to say a few words about public transportation. This county has been given a unique opportunity by the state legislature to address its transportation needs. This Commission is, has acted appropriately by conducting a study, feasibility study, and soliciting public input. I was at one input session over at the Roadnizer Center, it was well-attended with good discussion. Now, just because we have this opportunity, we don't need excessive haste in exercising it. We need to be sure before we leap. My biggest concern is MARTA. Yes, they have the expertise. Yes, that is probably the most expeditious path to restart transportation in this county. However, if we choose to join the MARTA Act, we will be relinquishing control. I'd like to ask you to look at how MARTA acts now, north versus south. Look at South Fulton and how they're served, as opposed to how North Fulton and the Dunwoody area is served. My fear, and I hope that my fear can be alleviated, my fear is that we would become a cash cow for MARTA and that our services would be minimal, just bus services and nothing towards the future. I'm depending on you, as Commissioners, to make sure that doesn't happen and to alleviate my fears in that area. Whether we need transportation or not is not the question, we need it. The question is how we are going to exercise our opportunity and best spend the taxpayers' dollar.
Thank you. Reginald Davenport, I believe, is.
Good evening. Good evening. I am here to speak about how Clayton County adult felony drug court has positively affected my life. A liar, a con artist, a cheat, and an alcoholic, these are the words that would, I would use to describe my character before entering drug court. I was the type of person who, like Frank Sinatra said, did it my way. Drug court has been the best thing that has ever happened to me. Before drug court, I was a scared, undependable, and goalless boy. Today, I stand before you, preparing to graduate on Thursday with 606 days sober, a confident, dependable, and goal-oriented man. You might ask, what was so special about drug court that I would hold in such high regards? The answers are simple. Number one, the structure. When a person first enters drug court, he or she is kept on a very short leash. As one proves his commitment to his sobriety, they are given more freedom. You see, the ball is put in our court. The million-dollar question is, what are we going to do with this life-changing opportunity? Number two is accountability. This is a word that we ran from in our act of addiction. It's, accountability is more than just a word, it's a way of life, and we are retrained to embrace it. And number three, the drug court team truly cares. Not surface-level, superficial caring, no, we're talking about gut-wrenching, soul-embracing caring. In conclusion, I am so thankful to God that this program exists because it changed my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport, and congratulations on your sobriety and your impending graduation.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kimberly Kirby.
I am Kimberly Kirby, a homeowner, homeowner here in Clayton County. Last year from Animal Control in our county, 2,700 dogs went to rescue, 300 were adopted, and these 800 were killed. If you say no to more than 65 large kennels in the new facility, six less than we have now, you will say yes to killing 68 more dogs every year when the new building is complete, costing $4,000-plus dollars. Last Monday, a lady came in to look for her dog. She was in possession of his vet record since he was a pup. He had been there for one night. The reclaim fee was $130. She had just had back surgery and in no way was financially able to save her dog. Therefore, he was a surrendered dog, meaning he would be the first to die on the next kill day. Thanks to the Partner Safe at Home Program, we were able to return the dog to the loving owner. These are people's pets, they're not wild animals. They have harnesses, they have tags, and they have names. They are victims of evictions and whatnot. Some people cannot afford the high reclaim fees. These fees have to be capped. These two, Suzie Q. and Kale, were killed by heart stick Thursday after the last time I spoke, not even a regular kill day. Seven pens were opened. The reason, and I quote, "Well, we didn't know how many guys, how many you guys were getting out today. How do we choose which healthy dogs to kill? The killing has to stop. For this reason, we need Lifeline Animal Project in the office, working side-by-side with the police. We need the liaison to create a workforce to make this a no-kill county. We need a mandatory chip put in every dog that leaves Animal Control. This will keep more spaces open. We need Lifeline to enforce the mandatory chip check upon intake. We're having problems with this, and it leads to unnecessary space depletion. I would like to invite each of you down for a kill day. Let's show the world you do care. Come look into the eyes of these dogs on death row, they're the victims of man's shame. Come tell these angels why they must die. And when the vet leaves, visit the ghost town left from the heart sticks. Hear the silence. Look into the eyes of the ones left behind, and you will see what they saw imprinted on their scared little minds. They have just seen the other dogs, one by one, being led to the door. They have seen and smelled and most of all, felt the fear. It is, it is as if they were the one on the end of the leash, breaking desperately with their paws so as not to be pulled through the door. This is a horrible place, what is being done here is horrible. If the new building for Animal Control has more, not less, large dog pens than we have now, this will surely almost all but cease. Won't you come down on kill day and spend the day in the back and walk the walk that these poor innocent dogs have to walk? All I ask is just one day. Save the innocents, and don't close your eyes to their eyes closing. Over half a million sets of eyes across the world are watching us. The ball is in our court. We need more than 65 large kennels in the new building if we truly want to be a great community and a great county. Also, we would like Captain Thompson to present the overwhelming matter of animal cruelty to the media. We're seeing way too many prolapsed rectums and burns. Just today, a four-week-old puppy came in with a hole drilled in its head, and maggots were pouring out. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing each of you at Animal Control."
Thank you. Victoria Patterson. Did you sign up for this, or are you here just for the presentation?
Yes, I'm presenting.
Okay, we're scratching for...
No, it's another, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's another Keith Parker?
Yes.
Oh, okay, come on. And you're both bald.
It's the haircut.
Bald.
I was confused, too, so. This gentleman comes every week, so.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. Here on behalf of the citizens of Jonesboro, and I guess, request for a little bit of information about a recreation center that was, they've been sort of looking forward to since 2004. There was allocation of funds, and there was land purchase based on the information provided by the county. As of right now, there is, from what I believe, in District 4, Ms. Edmison's area, there is no construction of that recreation center. The citizens are begging for information on when that recreation center will come to their area, because there's been rumors about that construction possibly sliding over to International Park, where it won't then at all help the citizens of that Jonesboro area. First of all, no public transportation, no way those kids get there, and we're just kind of publicly wanting to be brought up to date on where we stand with that recreation center for the Jonesboro citizens. And a lot of rumors are going around, basically saying that there was probably some sort of land purchase problems, meaning that there was no way for this recreation center to be built on the land that was purchased. The citizens just trying to get some clarity. So if we could, please publicly let us know where we are.
We are moving forward with that project, sir. There were some challenges with the land, and we are looking at possibly another site to build that recreation, to get further in depth with it. I don't see Dietrich Stanford, the Parks Director. Uh, I'm sorry. Okay. Get in touch with Ms. Anderson, Ariel Anderson, Chief Operating Officer, and she will further explain to you the ongoing details of that project, and then we can definitely make it known to everyone as well. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Okay, at this time, we will have a proclamation. Observing May 2014 is Older Americans Month, we'd ask Torres Strauter of Senior Services and her staff to please step forward at this time.
One, two, three. Camp, one, two, three. Last time, one, two, three. Okay, show me.
And don't they all look pretty in their yellow and red tonight?
Okay. All right, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners and Clayton County Senior Services are committed to helping all individuals maintain their health and independence throughout their later years in life, and whereas Clayton County Senior Services includes over 60,000 citizens ages 55 and older who possess an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of our community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations, and whereas older adults in Clayton County deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of our community and our nation, we recognize the value of injury prevention and safety awareness in helping older adults remain healthy and active. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich citizens, young and old, by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, emphasizing the need to take action to safeguard themselves from unintentional injuries where they live, work, and socialize, and helping older adults take control of their safety and well-being. And whereas, through the various programs and events offered by senior services, such as the upcoming May Fest celebration on Friday, May 16, 2014, at Clayton County International Park, seniors are provided with the opportunity to fellowship with family, friends, and neighbors across generations, thereby enriching the lives of everyone involved. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2014 as Older Americans Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I urge every citizen to take this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us achieve stronger and more meaningful connections with each other and enrich our community's quality of life. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of May in the year 2014. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. (applause) Good to see you, I like your hair, I almost recognized you. Yeah, looks good on you. Okay, next, we'd like the representatives of the drug court to come forward, and the participants as well, please. Whereas over the past 25 years, drug courts have served over 1.4 million individuals and are now recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history. This year marks the 25th anniversary of the nation's first drug court. And whereas drug courts save up to $27 for every dollar invested and produce up to $13,000 for every individual it serves, 75% of drug court graduates will never see another pair of handcuffs. And whereas drug courts are recognized as the most successful criminal justice intervention in our nation's history, with 2,840 drug courts nationwide. And whereas drug courts significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes and substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, drug courts facilitate community-wide partnerships that bring together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against drug abuse and criminality. And whereas the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court has admitted 99 participants and graduated 25 since its implementation, the Clayton County DUI Court has admitted 537 participants and graduated 172 since its implementation. And whereas the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court participants have a maximum total of 1,154 days clean and sober. The Clayton County DUI Court participants have contributed an average of 6,757 community service hours. These individuals are active in the community, pursuing sobriety, maintaining working jobs, and are not committing new criminal offenses or serving as county inmates. And whereas the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court has seen 100% of participants employed at graduation. I think we need to give a standing applause for that. The Clayton County DUI Court has seen 92% of participants employed at graduation. And whereas extraordinary expenses of drug courts and the principles practiced 25 years ago have helped cause 40 years of escalating prison populations to decline. And whereas the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court has had recidivism of 4%, and the Clayton County DUI Court has had recidivism of 2%. And whereas drug courts demonstrate that when one person rises out of drugs and crime, we all rise. The time has come to put a drug court within reach of every eligible person in need. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2014 as Drug Court Month in Clayton County, Georgia. I urge all citizens to recognize the significant contributions drug courts have made over the past 25 years towards reducing substance abuse, crime, and recidivism. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the sill of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of May in the year 2014. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. And Chairman, before we proceed with the next proclamation, I'd like for the people in the audience to be a little bit more receptive and not as noisy, because it does distract when we're presenting proclamations. All right. All right, next, we would ask Fire and Emergency Services to step forward, please. That would be Chief Landry Murkison and his staff. And this is recognizing Fire and Emergency Services as recipient of the 2013 EMA of the Year Award. Okay. This proclamation reads, whereas Emergency Management Association of Georgia serves as a policy advisory board, both to local emergency management agencies and to the state of Georgia Emergency Management Agency. And whereas for the past 50 years, the state has recognized the top emergency management agency for significant improvements to a municipality's preparedness and response to crisis situations. Also recognized is the difference the agency has made in the community to mitigate, respond to, and recover from a disaster. And whereas Georgia has a total of 161 emergency management agencies that include 159 county agencies and two cities. And whereas Clayton County Emergency Management Agency is the 2013 recipient of the prestigious Emergency Management Agency of the Year Award. And whereas Clayton County is recognized for its innovative outreach to the community, including its use of technology and social media. Additionally, the creation and implementation of its Ready Kids Campaign allows CCEMA to reach demographics often overlooked in community preparedness. And whereas CCEMA was also recognized for its collaborative efforts working within county government, participating in a noon lunchtime series, teaching active shooter response courses to the public, and for having a robust, is that C-E-R-T? Is it pronounced CERT? Which one? CERT, okay. And teen CERT. And whereas Fire and Emergency Services is honored by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners for its outstanding achievement and accomplishments awarded by the Emergency Management Association of Georgia. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby acknowledge and honor Fire and Emergency Services for its dedication to the safety and well-being of Clayton County citizens. I encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services for receiving the 2013 Emergency Management Agency of the Year Award and for providing exemplary service to the citizens of Clayton County, Georgia. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the sill of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this sixth day of May in the year 2014. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman. This time, we want to recognize and honor some extraordinary students in our community. First, we will call to receive a $1,000 scholarship. Both of them, oh, at the same time? Okay, I thought you wanted me to read the letters separately. Oh, okay, all right. Well, we'll go call both of them as Commissioner Singleton has requested. Tiffany Wilson and Imani Richards of Forest Park High School. Would also like to call the Coach Edward Wilson. If any family members are present, you're welcome to come up, too. Yeah, all family members are welcome to come up. And the first scholarship letter is addressed to Ms. Tiffany Danielle Wilson. Dear Tiffany, congratulations. It is with great pleasure and pride that I present you with a $1,000 scholarship to help with your college expenses. Your efforts and accomplishments as a student, as an athlete, and as a citizen of Clayton County are outstanding. You have always been an exceptional and well-rounded student, beginning with your days at Lake City Elementary School, to your time at Rex Mill Middle School, and then on to Forest Park High School, where you have maintained a grade point average of 3.6 or higher, with a schedule made up of mostly honors courses. Additionally, you have compiled an impressive list of athletic accomplishments as a member of the varsity basketball team, which you helped lead to a four-year record of 130 with appearances in the state finals, the state quarterfinals, and the state semifinals twice, including this season. We wish you great success as you head off to the University of North Carolina Asheville on a basketball scholarship to pursue a degree in physical therapy with the goal of one day establishing your own practice. Thank you for being a shining example and true representative of the kind of young people our county is producing. And again, congratulations on your scholarship award with warmest regards, Sona Singleton, Commissioner, Clayton County Board of Commissioners. Okay. The next letter is addressed to Ms. Imani Richards. Dear Imani, congratulations. It is with great pleasure and pride that I present you with a $1,000 scholarship to help with your college expenses. Your efforts and accomplishments as a student, as an athlete, and as a citizen of Clayton County are outstanding. You currently hold a 3.0 grade point average as a senior in the Forest Park High School class of 2014 and are a member of the National Technical Honor Society. Athletically, you lettered in basketball, where you helped lead the team to a four-year record of 130 with appearances in the state finals, the state quarterfinals, and the state semifinals twice, including this season. Also, you lettered in track and field, where you were the 2014 Region Four Quadruple A Champion in the high jump. Additionally, you found time to give back to the community, volunteering as a summer reading assistant at the Clayton County Library and working as a referee at the Forest Park Recreation Center. We wish you great success as you pursue your college degree in exercise science at Kennesaw State University on a basketball scholarship with the goal of becoming a certified sports specialist and physical therapist. Thank you for being a shining example and true representative of the kind of young people our county is producing. And again, congratulations on your scholarship award with warmest regards, Sona Single, Commissioner, Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call forward MARTA Chairman Robbie Ash, as well as Mr. Keith T. Parker, General Manager and CEO, who will both be presenting a MARTA overview. And first, we will hear from Mr. Robbie Ash.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. First, let me start by thanking you both for what you do for Clayton County and for the opportunity to be here and present to you all this evening. You'll hear shortly from Mr. Parker and his executive management team about the hard work that's been going on at MARTA over the past couple of years, about the fact that we've balanced our budget through some lean and hard economic times, that we've added to the reserves in the most recent year, that we're improving service, that we're adding trains, that we're adding bus routes throughout the system, that we're cleaning up the system. And the no-knuckle-head policy gets a lot of media attention, and as well it should, in terms of ensuring the comfort and respect that all of our patrons deserve. You'll hear from him about how we've been re-engineering our operations to ensure our fiscal stability going forward, both frontline service and the back office operations. From top to bottom, MARTA is getting reinvented, and it's showing firm results in the financial results that you'll hear more about this evening. But I'm here more in my capacity as Chairman of the Board, not just because I'm proud of the news that you're going to learn about us, but to talk to you a little bit about the enthusiasm I and my colleagues have for the possibility that Clayton would join our system as a full partner. We have a tremendous respect and hope that we can have that dialogue that will lead us to providing robust service throughout Clayton County in short order. We think that we would be able to do that. We think it's a tremendous opportunity for Clayton County and a tremendous opportunity for MARTA. I want to make myself available. If you have any questions for me as the Chair of the Board for how the Board is feeling, please feel free to contact me directly at any time. I'll certainly make my information available. I know that several of you individually look forward to talking with you and the dialogue over the coming months. I think it's a tremendous opportunity, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I think we have a ten-minute limitation, so I can't get into all those things Chairman Ash asked me to do. But first, I also want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come out and chat with you for a few minutes about what's happening with MARTA, and also to have a few colleagues with me who will join in to, if there's any questions that we can answer, including my Chief Operating Officer, Rich Kursak, our General Counsel, Liz O'Neil, and our Senior Planner, Don Williams. So with that, we'll jump right in. MARTA was, the last decade or so has been a very tough time for the transit system. We've undergone more service cuts and raised fares about as much as any other transit property in the entire nation. Most of our employees have only had one raise in the last decade, cut over 30% of our bus routes, and again, we raised fares, closed many of the restrooms in the system, and also just suffered from an overall negative perception, negative image. Where we're moving to is that MARTA is becoming a very strong financial steward of taxpayer dollars, committed to excellent customer service, and a true mobility and accessibility provider within this region, and very importantly, a true catalyst for economic development. Under that financial stewardship, which I'll talk a bit about, we want to talk about fiscal sustainability, changing our business practices, realizing many cost savings throughout our agency, and revenue generation opportunities. The balance trend, when I came in December of 2012, this chart was the first thing my CFO at the time presented to me. And what it shows is how MARTA's reserves were going down. from approximately $33 million per year over a five-year period to the point where we would be fiscally insolvent in about fiscal year 18. After less than six months, we were able to reprogram a number of different things and turn that $33 million projected deficit in FY '13 to a $9 million surplus. And with that, we've been able to completely and dramatically turn around the financial situation at the agency. So instead of where that red line shows you a dropping down to less than zero in financial reserves by the year fiscal '18, right now, we're projecting about a $162 million reserve amount. And that includes raises beginning in fiscal year '16, carrying out for our employees '16, '17, and '18, as well as significant improvements on the amount of service that we have on the road today. How have we done that? Through a number of measures. Huge things, revamping our entire IT focus, where we saved, we went from a $56 million budget to $42 million while improving the overall service, to larger, to smaller things such as automating our paychecks. We have 4,500 employees at MARTA, and for the last decades, we've always given all of those folks a paper stub. Now that's all automated, they can go back and look at their paychecks from 20 years ago, but it's all automated, and it saves us some money, and many other things in between, including refinancing some debt, converting almost all of our fleet now to compressed natural gas, which is much cheaper, of course, than the typical diesel-powered bus that's out there. All of this is a part of what we are calling our MARTA operational initiative, our MARTA transformational initiative. It's a five-year plan that completely changes the culture of the organization, look for efficiency opportunities throughout all of what we do and revenue-generating opportunities. So we're in the midst of it, and it's working very well up to this point. So some of the things I'd also wanted to talk to you a bit about are some of the customer services enhancements that are underway now that have taken place in the past year, and some of the things that are coming forward. First, on buses, MARTA had one of the oldest bus fleets in the nation. We are now replacing more than half of our bus fleet over the next three years. So you'll see a new bus added to our fleet almost every day for the next 45 days, and then we'll start up again later this year and adding 90 new buses next year, and then another 80 or so vehicles in the third year. So it's going to become one of the newer fleets in the nation using compressed natural gas vehicles, state-of-the-art vehicles that have cameras inside and out that monitor everything that's going on in there with much greater comfort than the buses you've seen in the past, upgrading the lighting in many of our stations, reopening many of the restrooms that have been closed during the downtimes, and reinvesting in our elevators and escalators. That is a part of other technological advances, including a whole new effort in signage and security improvements. We now have a new app where you can use your smartphone, where you're looking, where you can pretend like you are emailing someone, but actually be taking a picture of a person who is misbehaving on our service and sending a text message to our police department, who can then go out and apprehend the person who may be misbehaving on the system. We're investing in new security video analytics and putting cameras in every single bus in our system, as well as the rail cars and our services for folks with disability. And MARTA is already a safe system. Now, one of the things that we've suffered from by the negative, sometimes negative media portrayals of the agency is that folks think that MARTA is an unsafe system with lots of crimes going on. This is a chart that compares many of the other transit systems in our peer groups from around the country. And you'll see MARTA has actually the lowest number of Tier One types of crime events. That's the serious things like larcenies and violent crimes and so forth. But we're much lower than most of the transit systems in our peer group. And in fact, we have an award-winning police department that serves MARTA with over 300 and some odd officers. Other technology improvements, the days that you all, I'm sure, endured back when C-Trans was here, where folks would wait for a bus but really not know what time it was coming. We now have real-time information on our free MARTA On the Go app that tells you within seconds of when the next train or next bus will be arriving. So you always know exactly what time that bus, what time that vehicle will be coming. In addition, we're adding new components to this app that will take pictures, that will allow you to not only know where the bus is, but you'll be able to actually zoom in using Google Maps to actually see a live picture of what's happening at that bus stop at any particular time. In addition, later this year, we will be investing in a whole new system called AVIS, Audio Video Information System. It's a almost $90 million program that will be a total revamp of all of the signs that you see in the MARTA stations and whatnot. And not only will it give you bus and rail information, it'll also allow us to tap into things like Amber Alerts when kids or folks become missing, and be a real clearinghouse for us to get information out to our customers during tough events. And it's also about accessibility and mobility. Of course, if you were to join as full partners of MARTA, that would not only bring the bus and rail service, but also our mobility service. That's a service for folks with disabilities that prevent them from using their regular services. And that, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, all those vehicles are equipped with cameras as well and provides a $2.50 trip to anywhere on the MARTA system. So quite literally, a person could pay $2.50, get on one of these mobility vans, and go to an appointment in Alpharetta. So you can't beat that from a cost standpoint in any other service provider. Other things we also are really focused in on is creating opportunities for small businesses. MARTA has a federally recognized and certified small business program that really goes out and incentivizes small business to do business with MARTA. About every quarter, we have a Doing Business with MARTA Day, where small and minority-owned businesses can come out and learn all the particulars about how to join in and provide us an even greater group of folks to choose from when we are looking for products and services. And certainly, one of the things that's gotten a lot of attention from MARTA over the last few months is transit-oriented development. And that's where you use transit to spark and provide a catalyst for new development around our stations and other areas. An example of that is we just entered into a partnership with Walton Properties to build a new 400-unit apartment complex right around our Martin Luther King Station, 20% set aside for affordable housing, where they are doing three things. First, providing a new amenity for our customers. Secondly, improving the actual neighborhood. And then, thirdly, actually paying MARTA for the pleasure of doing that. Another development we just signed, we signed an agreement with Columbia Ventures to develop our Avondale Station indicator, where they will be building an apartment and condo complex of over 700 units, as well as new retail space, office space, and providing opportunities for folks in the neighborhood. So both of those developments have occurred just in the last few months, and many others are contacting us almost on a daily basis to enter into partnerships with them as new businesses begin to relocate around MARTA stations. The other thing we would pledge to you is that if we do begin to run service here, we'll hold job fairs right here. MARTA is hiring bus operators, rail folks, engineers, station agents, you name it. And we would hold those job fairs right here in this area, and as well as look at the possibility of creating our own garage down in this area and try to recruit as many Claytonites as possible.
I'm sorry, Mr. Parker, your 10 minutes are over.
Okay.
Well, thank you. What we'd like to do is, before you leave the podium, is just open it up for board members if they have any questions on your presentation, and if you have a copy of your presentation that we can look at later, we'd appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Parker?
Is the presentation almost over?
We have three more slides.
Is it the board's pleasure? Okay, continue on, Mr. Parker.
Robbie took up most of my time, that's what happened. At joining MARTA, of course, you leverage a number of different assets, including a full-scale planning department that would work with you to work out all your routes, help you with your community involvement and that sort of thing, a federally recognized grants management group. We are a certified recipient of federal dollars and can provide matches with any local money for different types of projects, and of course, work very closely with the Federal Transit Administration, GDOT, the USDAOT, and many other groups. One other final thing I didn't want to mention to you is that MARTA certainly is, we recognize that the service here was well-respected. This is a survey that was done on C-Trans service back in 2010 that showed by the year 2010, well over 60, I'm sorry, actually, over 80% of the folks were either felt satisfied or very satisfied about that service. So it obviously was a well-liked service. And positive coverage, as I mentioned, MARTA suffered for quite a bit of time from negative media images and so forth. But we do a relatively sophisticated analysis of media coverage of the transit system. And what we found in the last quarter was that the positive media coverage about MARTA, everything from how we've been balancing our budget and how we have transformed a number of different things, is worth over $1 million of value. And you can see comments from the governor where he has praised the agency's leadership, the AJC, who was not always a big friend of the transit system, and even Mike Jacobs, the Chairman of the MARTOC Group that oversees MARTA, who outspokenly was against me getting this job a year and a half ago, has written publicly that he was wrong, that the Board made a really good choice in hiring me, and that things have turned around in a very positive way at MARTA. And the last thing I'll mention is that we know you have a very difficult decision to make. In fact, the gentleman who was up here a little earlier and said, you all need to make sure that if you do enter into a partnership with MARTA, that you take that very seriously. I agree with him, that you would want to make sure that we are up to the challenge of providing great service. But we believe in transit in three reasons why. First, in terms of helping your environment, nothing more you can do. If you have a two-car household, if one person switches to using the transit system on a regular basis, there's nothing more you can do to help the environment. Secondly, saving money. The typical four-person household can save upwards of $10,000 a year by switching, by removing one of those automobiles and dedicating, and becoming more dedicated to MARTA. And health benefits. What we found in a study done of one of my former transit systems in Charlotte is that the typical person who uses mass transit on a regular basis loses on average 6.5 more pounds per year than folks who drive alone. So you save the environment, save money, and lose weight. I mean, what other better investment is there? And with that, we can answer any questions that you may have.
Very, very compelling, the last three points. And also, appreciate you pointing out that the gentleman was wrong about your hiring, so. Any questions from the Board?
I have several questions, so I'm not sure if we would get with them at some point.
If that's your pleasure. Again, if you could leave us with a copy of your presentation.
We provided it on Friday, so we can... But we can answer any questions?
But I still want the presentation, but yes.
Okay, now, you all have a board. What would the representation be if Clayton County decided to go that route? What would our representation on the board be?
It's my understanding you would have two full voting members.
By May, the current makeup of the Board is there are, well, come July 1, there'll be 10 voting members of the Board. There are currently 11. There's a quirk in the law that they passed recently. They're going to take the GDOT Commissioner's vote away from him or her, depending on the Commissioner. But the answer to your question is Clayton would have two out of the 12 voting members of the Board.
There has been a rumor going about if we were to do the one cent sales tax, that it would bring in anywhere between $40 to $50 million. But to do a transit bus service in Clayton would only take maybe $8 to $10 million. So now, would we get that money back?
Well, your money would be used to provide service out here. So, because it's not just bus service that you may be interested in. But we understand there was a study done about the possibility of commuter rail and a much more robust level of bus service. But yes, the groups who are partners in the organization right now in MARTA get back what they put into the service.
So it wouldn't go in that pot of Fulton de cab? We would get whatever extra revenues we receive that you don't use for the service?
No, it would go into, and we'd have to work through the particulars because we'd have to enter into a signed contractual agreement. So we'd work through all the details. But one of the things you get by joining MARTA is all the infrastructure that's already there. So you would not be paying an entry fee, if you will, and instead be able to join right in and be able to use a $6 billion asset without having to pay for any of those things. You'd just join right in and have it all at your disposal. But in terms of exactly what the mix of routes and services, that would be negotiated.
Okay, that was my next question regarding routes. Because we had C-Trans, but it covered mostly north Clayton, and it went down to our jail and made a U-turn. Now, how much say would we have, or would MARTA decide how much into Clayton County the buses will go?
You would be a full, you'd be a full member of the agency, so you decide.
We get all this in writing?
I'll say this for sure, we wouldn't be here, I wouldn't be here right now if we weren't talking about providing robust service throughout Clayton County. I mean, as voting members of the Board, there's zero question in my mind what we would be talking about is providing service throughout Clayton County. I mean, let's be candid about this, because this is the first system expansion we're talking about in the 35 years in which MARTA has existed. We're going to do everything in our level power to get it right and to be a shining example of why other jurisdictions might want to take a look at joining our system in the future.
Okay, now, in the past with C-Trans, the buses only went to the airport. But I guess this would be a part of the route, too. Would they go downtown? Would they just stop at the airport again?
We would work with you, your planners, along with our planning team, and in all likelihood, the way we typically do this is go out to the community and find out where they want to go, and then develop the service plan around that. So if you want routes that would potentially be express routes, that would go from some of your major activity areas or parking lot lots or what have you, and go straight to the city with limited stops, we'd work those out. If you want more circulator routes within Clayton County, we'd work that out. But it would be, we would work with you to develop what the routing structure would be.
I have a question, Mr. Parker. So I understand that the contract between MARTA and the county is preliminary to, or part of the ballot question if it comes to the ballot in November.
That's my understanding.
Now, if that, so the flexibility of that, if we have routes and it's determined in the future that those routes need to be changed or adjusted, does that require an all-new contract and ballot, or is there flexibility in there?
And we've planned, we would want to discuss with you creating the most flexibility possible. So in other words, what probably would be better than identifying, here's the exact route, is identifying how many hours of service you would want. And then using that as the way to then go out to the public and use those hours of service as a way to structure what the routes and time of day that they would be served and that type of thing.
Sounds flexible.
Okay, you mentioned something about the infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all use some of those dollars, MARTA dollars, I guess you'd call it, for infrastructure? Because before, we had a big problem with the C-Trans buses, the wait, and the roads and all were all torn up. Could some of that sales tax money go, and I don't know?
If it's a transit improvement, in all likelihood, it would be eligible.
Yes, I have a question. A number of our constituents, of course, met with us during these meetings, and one key concern is commuter rail, as you mentioned. What is the plan, or when would the plan be established? Like Commissioner Hambrick said, it's $48 to $50 million to expand commuter rail to Clayton County.
We'd have to work that out with you. And we wouldn't want to make any presumptions of exactly what you want, how you want it. So we would have sit-down discussions and work out what you want, and then use our expertise to get it delivered to you.
Okay, and one thing you didn't sound so certain about was that garage, the garage opening here in Clayton. Can we make that a certainty?
That's, but again, we would want to work out the budget with you and how you want to spend those dollars. And if that would be one of the focal points for you, certainly, we think we could make that happen.
So is that pre-contract, or once the two members are put on the MARTA Board?
We could do that pre-contract. We can lay out a budget for you of how we anticipate the funds would come in and how we would use them up.
Okay, one, I think this is the last one. So many times, businesses will come to the county and they will promise us jobs for our residents. And then, once they're here, no jobs. Is there some kind of guarantee that a certain percentage of our residents will?
We can't guarantee it because we don't know what the applicant pool will look like and that sort of thing. But what we can promise is that we would hold job fairs right here, would have our HR folks right here and folks who meet the qualifications, that's who we'd be going after. And it makes sense for us, it makes business sense for us. People who live here know your customers, and they know, they go to the barber shops here, they, we don't, but...
You had to throw me in there, didn't you?
They go to the barber shops, they go to church here. And so, bus drivers, the most effective ones are the ones who know the communities that they're serving. So it creates every incentive for us to want to hire people from right here. But it's not just bus drivers, I don't want to leave it at that. We need engineers, we need station agents, we need everything from lawyers to chemists. So that vast gamut of 4,500 folks, we want to make sure that you all are very aware of those opportunities. And also, we want to help create generating jobs here. Once we think putting forward some of the services that are out here, I mean, putting more robust bus service in... more robust bus service and potential commuter rail, we think other, other job creators would want to come to this area more so than maybe now.
Single-tending thing?
Oh, no, I told them everything to ask you.
Well, the only thing I have to say is, I just want to be absolutely clear, this is what I hear you saying, Mr. Parker, and that is...
We were recording it, remember?
Exactly. I'll now show it back to them. Should this board decide to move forward with MARTA, we would play a major role in the planning of the system, which would be utilized here in Clayton County.
It is your system at that point, just like my bosses at Fulton County. We have three appointees who write my, who do my review every year, three appoint, four appointees from DeKalb, and three from the City of Atlanta. And they are my bosses. So you would then become my new bosses, once you appoint your two members, and that's, that's what it works.
Okay, so you'll have two members, DeKalb has how many?
DeKalb has four, it's bigger.
And City of Atlanta has?
Three, and Fulton has three.
And we have two.
And you'd have two.
That's by population.
And that's done by population, so.
One last question.
I have a question as well.
Go ahead.
The members who represent the City of Atlanta, do they have more of a say-so about the services in the City of Atlanta? And the members that represent the DeKalb County, they have more of a say-so about what happens in DeKalb County and Fulton County as well?
Yes, but they don't do, but to be honest, it doesn't work that way. What we do is draw up the plan for, and let me back up a little bit. It hasn't been necessary to do it that way, because the routes haven't changed that much in any of those places in quite some time. And so, the board appointees don't really get all that involved in the, in the day-to-day planning. However, the city planning staff does, and the city economic development staff works with us to talk about economic development opportunities. For example, Invest Atlanta, it works closely with us on transit-oriented development projects within the city. And I'm sure your investment group here, or the equivalent of whoever your economic development group is here, I'm sure will work closely with us to look at how we can create jobs around some of the bus stops and around if we end up moving forward with the commuter rail line, and that sort of thing. So whatever your pleasure is and how you want to utilize us, that's what we will do.
I promise you, this is the last question. How closely will you work with, or will it be our transportation and development department?
Yes, we would work hand-in-hand with them, hand-in-hand.
Mr. Ash?
The only thing I was gonna add is, I am an appointee of one of the jurisdictions, specifically the City of Atlanta. And certainly, when there are elected officials in the City of Atlanta who have questions about, about bus routes, about train service, about this condition of a station, they naturally look to me and to my other, the other colleagues, Ms. Abernathy from the City of Atlanta, Dr. Rod Edman from the City of Atlanta, they talk to us about those things. And I view my role, and my role now as chair is a little different, but I'm still a City of Atlanta appointee. So I do feel like I represent some of the City of Atlanta's voice on, on the board. And I would certainly imagine that Clayton County, the Clayton County's appointees would be the primary voice, would be the, would be your liaisons to the, to the MARTA board, and that your staff and our staff would work together on a regular basis, because I know that's, as Mr. Parker suggested, that's how it works with our existing jurisdictions.
If there's any concern that we would try to come out here and say, here's where the bus routes go, here's what time they run, and that sort of thing, that, that would be, that would be suicidal for us to do that. You know Clayton County far better than we do. So we're going to listen to you about how to structure your routes, where they go, what time of day they go there, all those things. We want to hear that from you, and we'll work with you to make that happen.
Okay, we really must move on. So, thank you, gentlemen, for taking the time to come down and showing us what you had in terms of the status.
You're welcome.
I just had that one last question.
Hold on a second, go ahead.
I just want to make sure I understand, there were some questions about a penny of sales tax equalling forty-something to fifty-something million dollars. So my question is, Mr. Parker, if, if the voters approve the increased capacity in our sales tax on an upcoming referendum, then are we obligated to use the entire penny, or does the MARTA Act allow for smaller increments?
I think there's a couple of questions in there, so now, if, why don't you repeat the questions?
We don't have to go to eight percent.
I don't...
Either use a half a penny or a full penny.
That would have to be an agreement between you and the MARTA board, in terms of how, at what level you're brought in. But you'd have to have agreement, again, between the county and the...
And that agreement doesn't have to include an entire penny worth of revenues?
No, the agreement has to be...
It's a loaded question, I know the answer.
The agreement has to be between the, between the two of you, and what that number is would have to be agreed upon between the two of you.
And it can be less than a penny?
The legislation allows it to be less than a penny.
Thank you.
But the board and you would have to reach agreement about what that number is.
Okay, thank you, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
All right, thank you again for your time.
You're welcome, thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Okay, next, the board will hear from Mr. Timothy Jefferson of JE Group LLC. It's a presentation on an economic development revenue generating opportunity for the county.
Yes, please. I mean... No.
Mr. Jefferson? Sir?
Commissioner Rooks. It's like the TV show, him.
All right, Mr. Jefferson, you have the floor.
Good evening, how y'all doing? Everybody's doing fine, Chairman, Vice Chair Rooks, and Commissioners. I tell you, it's been a long-winded task after three years of due diligence on Clayton County. I have done my due diligence and comprehensive plan, I have sowed seeds in the community. I did not come, I, that we invested our own money to make sure that we were in order. But now, we have a wonderful opportunity to really advance the county with a revenue stream outside of miller's rate and being co-dependent on Splotch or any other entity that we might partner ourselves with. So I, I really understood it back in nineteen ninety-eight, thanks to Clark Atlanta University, I did an economic development course there at the Omni Hotel for a week of due diligence. So I'm a home builder, build shopping centers, all those things are elementary. But this has been in my spirit since nineteen eighty-five. So now, whenever a county or municipality or city is in trouble, this was part of the economic study. You first have to look at the source. Even though I'm an individual, and I have thirty-five years of experience in construction and development, you have to bring together the best minds. So in bringing together the best minds, you have a tendency to bring the gifts to the table in order to tackle the issue at hand. So without any further ado, I would like to introduce my team members. My team members have years of experience, we're trained, and we are excellent in what we do. First, I'd like to introduce my partner. He's a retired Lieutenant Colonel. He is the founder of JE Group, that stands for James Executive Group. James Executive Group means we partner with the best minds in execution, implementation and execution, we can get it done. Mr. Danny James Senior is also a Bronze Star recipient from Desert Storm. He lives in the federal market. He saw a need that I was trying to do in partnering with municipalities and cities to co-partner. Co-partnering is critical in economic downturn. The public and private sector must come together to implement and execute the vision. Mr. Danny James, would you please stand, sir? Thank you. Thank you so much. So we reached out after careful due diligence and co-partnered with a construction team that has done forty-three million dollars this year. They are well-known in the Atlanta area, they have twenty-four years of experience of development. And we are so grateful and honored to partner with LTC Construction and Consultants based in Fabrin, Georgia. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Herbert R. Thompson II. So without the team, I would like to introduce and execute, and this is very critical for the county. My due diligence says the State of Georgia owes you all seventy-five million dollars. I have a team of lawyers that we are partnering to doing the due diligence from the National Foreclosure Study, and I have a team of real estate attorneys that specialize in getting you all that money. So Grady Roberts is a senior real estate attorney, he's not here, but his partner is here, Mr. Sammy Davis. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I pronounced your name wrong. Carson, Mr. Sammy Carson, real estate attorney. So he represents our interests in that endeavor. And of course, you can't buy real estate without having a real estate team, and I would like to introduce Ms. Deputentley, she represents Berkshire Hathaway, who I will be meeting with Mr. Warren Buffett shortly. And last but not least, I tell you, this lady, I, when I was interviewing her, I said, can you handle a fifty-billion-dollar budget? She's had thirty years of banking experience, she's always been the Vice President of Commercial Lending, Ms. Penny Davis. Of course, y'all know Jeffrey Benoit, he's my pit bull. He does special projects, he's on my team. And of course, the other staff is represented by LTC Construction. So what this is, is this is a, we are securing forty-one acres. We are in negotiation stages at this time. This would be a mixed-use development. We have currently, if you look at the arena, the arena is going to be a thirty-thousand-seat arena. We have two four-star hotels, I think the airport limitations, we have to verify fourteen stories, six to fourteen stories. We have a mixed-use multiplex development, and then we have apartments and condos in this mixed-use area that's, we're negotiating now. So I want to elaborate on the apartments. I have identified an area, and this is an etiquette-driven community. In other words, you cannot come in this community with nonsense. So the apartment complex is ethically driven. This will be for first responders and school teachers. The apartment unit will not exceed seven-hundred-dollar a month rent, because we want to co-partner with them to subsidize their income, because they do a worthy cause for our community. Secondly, the condo area, we have an amphitheater that will hold three thousand people, so there'll be constant events. But I want to focus on the Plex Arena, thirty-thousand-seater. By the county investing with JE Group and the municipalities, what happens is this. There's a surcharge fee, and that will be fluctuating, if you look at the signage here, verbal fluctuating surcharge fee, eight-tier system, eight dollars to fifteen dollars, depending on the price of the ticket. Now, that revenue with you all's investment comes directly to you. The investment I'm requesting, I'm requesting a private executive session with all the mayors and the board to expound on that a little further. But I put a little example here. A simple four-day event out of a month that is sold out generates one-point-eight million at max surcharge fee. And that means the Justin Biebers of the world are coming here and charge two-hundred dollars for a ticket, then we implement that maximum fifteen-dollar surcharge fee. Ringling Brothers and Bonner Bailey Circus, we'd probably use an eight-dollar surcharge fee. So, the eight dollars represents the county and all seven cities. Now, a thirty-thousand-seat arena at fifteen dollars surcharge fee equals four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for one day. One day. You times that times four days, it generates one-point-eight million generated. The breakdown, we are requesting a little bit more investment from the county, we should share that in the executive session before we announce that, and then we are asking a little bit more from the municipalities. At three dollars to the county equals ninety-thousand dollars, times four days equals three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand that's revenue generating, times twelve months equals four-point-three million dollars. Now, this is just a four-day event. This is a no-brainer. Am I right? So, we get down to the cities. The cities get one dollar, that equals thirty-thousand dollars times four days equals a hundred-and-twenty-thousand times twelve months, they get one-point-four million, it's a no-brainer. So, as we engage on this mixed-use development, this is a historical transformational thing that's going to occur in Clayton County. I am under the direction of Congressman David Scott. I met with him on March twenty-eighth, and as I'm speaking right now, this is kingdom business. This is actually forty days and forty nights that I'm presenting to you. So, I'm saying to you, we need Clayton County to move forward in the Spirit of Excellence. This complex would create five thousand high-paying jobs. As a lease or, any corporation coming into this complex must pay their employees a minimum of fifteen dollars. Any five-star restaurant must pay their servers seven dollars, a livable wage, because we have, must operate in the Spirit of Excellence to transform the county and the workers. You cannot pay a worker seven dollars an hour, and y'all, you get in this attitude. I'm pretty sure we all experienced that. So this is an etiquette-driven community operating in the Spirit of Excellence. To add it plus, we also going to start a nonprofit, I heard MARTA talk about their buses. We're gonna add a nonprofit transit system called the Spirit of Excellence Transit Service. We're gonna buy two hundred natural gas buses that's going to service the aisle development and partnering with Greta, they're using their parking lot facilities, charging one dollar to come back and forth. So, I don't know necessarily if we need MARTA, I don't know necessarily if we need to partner up. I think if you co-partner with us, we can operate in the Spirit of Excellence as a nonprofit. We have a lot of grant money out there, that it would be sustainable without partnering with any entity where Clayton County can be in full control of their destiny. It's time for Clayton County to take charge of their destiny and stop looking for a handout and stop trying to co-partner with other entities. This is an example of what we can do in partnering with JE Group LLC and moving forward in the Spirit of Excellence. Now, with all that said, we, after meeting with Ms. Buford, the President of Clayton County Champ, Chamber of Commerce, and I met with everybody, we're gonna do this with or without you. with or without you. Period. But what we are trying to do is co-partner with you in the spirit of excellence for Clayton County to be a shining star, where everybody come to us, instead of we're reaching out to everybody else and trying to co-partner with them. Mr. Chairman, you have done an excellent job in your alliances you built. You know what I mean? I'm proud of your leadership, sir, and that is necessary moving forward. But I'm sick and tired of an ambulance number six on an emergency call blowing blue smoke. I'm sick and tired of seeing police cars and search department cars with one headlight working. I'm sick and tired of our county not being able to handle the infrastructure of our automobile service to the people, because our budget is restrained. This gives us an opportunity and a revenue generating where we don't have to be the stepchild of nobody, that we are taking charge of our destiny. This is a fifty-year plan. I'm ready to do this revenue generating with you all and partner with you all for twenty years. You would be paid back in one year. So, for twenty years, you would be making thirty-million dollars a year. The cities would be making ten-million dollars a year. With good stewardship, in twenty years, we can transform this county and make it the Afro-Reda of the South. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jeff?
I have a question.
Yes.
The surcharge, the variable fluctuating surcharge between eight and fifteen dollars.
Yes, sir.
I know it's an example, but if I subtract the three dollars to the county and the one dollars to the city along that scale, what does the other four to eleven dollars?
The other five, the other five goes back to the real estate firm that would be managing for sustainability. Not only that, this arena will be a retractable roof. We are going to do a five-star locker room. We are going to do five-star private booths. My goal is to attract a, the Atlanta Hawks. We want to be in competition with Phillips Arena to design this facility. Not only that, the ballrooms underneath will be for conventions. You know what I mean? So, we can be competitive in the convention arena along with an eight-hundred-bedroom facility. Mr. Thomas has something to say. Thank you.
Hey, Chair. Let me clear some things up real quick. On the arena, it is to attract the, just like Cheshang has, Cheshang has on the north side of town, we want to bring that back here. Mr. Turner, you know, I'm president of Home Association in Clayton County. So, the whole idea was to bring stuff here, to create the jobs here, to give back to our county, just as well as Afro-Reda has their county, Cobb County has their county, Atlanta has their county, so on and so on. The whole idea of the layout of the apartment complex, the arena, the amphitheater, so we won't have to spend our tax dollars outside our county. They are right here. It's to empower our county, because I've been here in this county for almost twenty years, in this county. I have done great things when the commissioner, when Chair Turner was chief, and he came out to the Home Associations on several occasions, and we've done great things as a partnership. I'm not here to embellish on other counties, but I want to beautify our county, because our county deserves the same accolades that other counties are getting outside. So, we have economical dollars that we know the government has to give, and we want to use those dollars to the best of our community, just as well as the other communities around us. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, what we would like to do is we would like to, within seventy-two hours, if we can get all the mayors together and the board together, then we can present the actual investment concept. And hopefully, we can expedite it and move expeditiously forward. That's what I would like the board to vote on, that we can get all the mayors and go into executive session with my team and explain the investment and the structure, because I don't want to espouse on anything to the public right now without the proper execution moving forward. So, this is what JE Group and LTC Construction and Consulting is requesting, that within seventy-two hours that we meet and discuss the investment strategy moving forward, sir.
I would encourage you to get in touch with Mayor Bobby Cartwright.
Yes.
He is the chairperson for the Mayor's, Clayton County Mayor's Association.
Yeah, me and Bobby Cartwright are on the same page. We operate in the same.
Well, he's the one who will call for a meeting of the mayors, and then we can go from that point.
Okay.
Then touch bases with my office, and we'll go for it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Next, the board will consider requests of Carol Rogers, Contract Compliance Manager of Central Services.
Please take them all together.
Thank you. Good evening. I have eighteen for the board tonight.
How many?
Eighteen.
And please take them together.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Our first one is a request to sell county surplus items. Central Services would like to obtain the necessary approval from the Board of Commissioners to dispose of lot number three-nine-zero, T-shirt, press, and accessories by utilizing our contract with GovDeals.com. I respectfully request your approval of this recommendation. Next item is for purchase of IBM Hardware Repair and Maintenance, Soft Choice statewide contract, SWC nine-zero-eight-one-three-dash-zero-two. This purchase requisition is for IBM Hardware, as requested by the Information Technology Department. The director's recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of thirty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven dollars, forty cents, by utilizing a state contract with Soft Choice, located in Norcross, Georgia. Funding is available through the Information Technologies FYE two thousand and fourteen of the Contract Services Budget. The Department Recommendation Purchase Requisition and quote for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next is for purchase of vehicles for Clayton County Police Department. This purchase requisition is for four new vehicles. The Chief of Police recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-fifty-three dollars, fourteen cents, by utilizing the state contracts with Atkins Ford Dodge Chrysler Jeep, located in Wanda, Georgia, and Hardy Chevrolet, located in Dallas, Georgia. Funding is available through the county's vehicle replacement funds. The Department Recommendation Purchase Requisition and quote for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next item is for license plate reader for Clayton County Police Department, sole-source purchase. The Chief of Police recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of ninety-three-thousand-four-hundred dollars from Vigilant Solutions, located in Villarica, Georgia, whose company is a sole-source supplier for this type of equipment. Funding is available through the Edward G. Bryan Grant. The Department Recommendation Purchase Order Requisition, sole-source letter, and quotes for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next item is for purchase of touch-print fifty-three-hundred scanner with accessories. This purchase requisition is for a touch-print scanner with accessories, as requested by the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-sixty dollars, by utilizing the GSA State Contract, GS three-five-F-dash-zero-four-two-R, and purchase the equipment from Safran, located in Bloomington, Minnesota. Funding is available through the General Fixed Asset Funds. The Department Recommendation Purchase Order Requisition and vendor quote for the above reference requests are attached for your review and information. Next item is for purchase of Voltaire Solution Equipment. This is for the Elections Department, and it is a sole-source purchase. The Elections Director's recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of thirty-five-thousand-five-hundred-ninety dollars from Election System and Software, located in Omaha, Nebraska, whose company is a sole-source supplier for this type of equipment. Funding is available through Elections Other Machinery and Equipment Funds. The Department's Recommendation Purchase Order Requisition, sole-source letter, and quote for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next item is for the purchase of two-hundred-and-seventy-five Dell computers for Clayton County Police Department. This purchase requisition is for two-hundred-and-seventy-five Dell computers. The Chief of Police recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of two-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty-two dollars, ninety-five cents, by utilizing a state contract with Dell Computers, located in Round Rock, Texas. Funding is available through the Police Department's four-three-nine-three Minor Computer Equipment Funds. The Department Recommendation Purchase Requisition and quote for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next item is for the purchase of seventy-five Tasers and accessories for the Clayton County Police Department, sole-source purchase. This purchase requisition is for seventy-five Tasers and accessories. The Chief of Police recommendation is to approve this purchase in an amount of seventy-four-thousand-eleven dollars, ten cents, from Taser International, located in Scottsdale, Arizona, whose company is a sole-source supplier for this type of equipment. Funding is available through the Police Department's four-three-nine-four Other Minor Equipment Funds. The Department Recommendation Purchase Order Requisition, sole-source letter, and quotes for the above referenced request are attached for your review and information. Next item is for Rex Road Improvement Phase Two, Clayton County, Georgia, RFB Package thirteen-dash-fifty-five. This bid is for the Rex Road Improvement Phase Two, as requested by the Transportation and Development Department. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., located in Marietta, Georgia. This recommendation is based upon the lowest responsive bidder that meets the specifications of Transportation and Development, in an amount of five-hundred-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-one dollars, seventy-two cents. Funding is available through the two thousand and nine SPOS Funds. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation and Agreement for the above referenced bid are attached for your review and information. Next item is for Construction Materials Testing Inspection Sole borrowings Annual Contract, RFB Package thirteen-dash-sixty-five. This bid is for various Clayton County projects. This request is to award this bid to Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC, located in Kennesaw, Georgia, whose firm was the lowest overall responsive bidder. Funding is available through the two thousand and four and two thousand and nine SPOS Project Funds. The bid tabulation summary, Silverman Construction Management Recommendation Memorandum, and Agreement for the above referenced project are attached for your review and information. Next item is for Clayton County Deceased Persons Transport Service Annual Contract, RFP Package number thirteen-dash-seventy-one. This bid is for the Deceased Persons Transport Service, as requested by the Clayton County Staff Attorney. The Chief Staff Attorney's recommendation is to award a contract to the primary vendor, Willie A. Watkins Funeral Home of Riverdale, Inc., located in Riverdale, Georgia, whose firm was the lowest responsive bidder, and to the secondary vendor, Buy One Atlanta, located in Atlanta, Georgia, whose firm was the second-lowest responsive bidder. Funding is available through the two thousand and fourteen General Funds. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation Memorandum, and Agreements for the above referenced bid are attached for your review and recommendation. Next item is for Point South Parkway Sidewalk Installations, Clayton County, Georgia, RFB Package number fourteen-dash-zero-three. This bid is for the Point South Parkway Sidewalk Installation, as requested by the Director of Transportation and Development. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to RJ Haney and Associates, Inc., located in Forest Park, Georgia. This recommendation is based upon the lowest responsive bidder that meets the specifications of Transportation and Development, in an amount of one-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-forty-six dollars, sixty-six cents. Funding is available through the two thousand and nine SPOS Project Funds. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation and Agreement for the above referenced bid are attached for your review and information. Next item is Livable Center Initiative Investment Policy Study for the Mountain View Area, RFP Package fourteen-dash-eighteen. This proposal is for a Livable Center Initiative Policy Study, as requested by the Director of Economic Development. The Evaluation Committee consisted of county representatives from Economic Development, Transportation and Development, Community Development, and the Fire Departments, have reviewed the proposal. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc., located in Atlanta, Georgia, with the highest score of four-sixty-six and a fee cost of one-hundred-seven-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars. Funding is available through the Atlanta Region Commission Grant and the Mountain View Tax Allocation District Fund Balance. The tabulation summary, Department Recommendation and Agreement for the above referenced proposal are attached for your review and information. Next is for Officiating Services for the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Athletic Programs Annual Contract, RFB Package number fourteen-dash-twenty-four. This bid is for Officiating Services for various programs, as requested by the Director of Parks and Recreation. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to Peach State Empires Association, Inc., located in Jonesboro, Georgia, whose firm was the sole bidder. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation FYE two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen Budget. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation Memorandum, and Agreement for the above referenced project are attached for your review and information. Next item is for Installation of Wet Fire Sprinkler and Fire Alarm Systems for Clayton County, RFB Package number fourteen-dash-twenty-six. This bid is for a wet fire sprinkler and fire alarm system, as requested by the Director of Building Maintenance. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to Alliance Fire Protection Services, Inc., located in Loganville, Georgia, whose firm was the sole bidder, in an amount of ninety-five-thousand-four-hundred-eighteen dollars, fifty cents, for the wet fire sprinkler system, and fifty-three-thousand-one-hundred-twenty dollars for the fire alarm system. Funding is available through the county's, the Clayton County's General Fund. The bid tabulation summary, Department Recommendation Memo, and Agreement for the above referenced bid are attached for your review and information. Next item is bid, Package Number two-zero-one-four-dash-Q, which is Georgia Technology Authority Agency Agreement, which is a statewide contract. The request is by, is from the Director of Information and Technology, is to utilize the Georgia Technology Authority Agency Agreement for Wireless Communication Devices and services with Verizon Wireless, Inc., located in Afro-Reda, Georgia. The recommendation letter, Verizon Agreement, and GTA Agency Agreement for the above referenced project are attached for your review and information. Next project is Telecommunications and Data Services Annual Contract, RFP Package number thirteen-dash-forty-one. This proposal is for an annual contract for Telecommunications and Data Services, as requested by the Director of Information Technology. The Evaluation Committee consisted of county representatives from the Information Technology Department, and they have reviewed the proposals. The Director's recommendation is to award a contract to AT&amp;T Corporation, located in Bedminster, New Jersey, with the highest score of four-oh-six for Section One, which is for telecommunications, and four-eighty-one for Section Two, which is for data. Funding is available through the Information Technology and County's General Fund, FYE two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. The tabulation summary, Department Recommendation and Agreement for the above referenced proposal are attached for your review and your information. Audit and Services for Clayton County, Georgia, Annual Contract, First Contract Amendment, RFP Package Number fourteen-dash-zero-seven. The Chief Staff Attorney's recommendation is to amend the contract with Malden and Jenkins LLC, located in Macon, Georgia. The amendment will be to revise the indemnification and insurance section of the contract. The original contract was approved by the Board of Commissioners on four-fifteen-fourteen. The amendment for the above referenced proposal is attached for your review and information. I request you approve all recommendations, authorize the Chairman his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of all the contracts, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly. And that completes my eighteen.
Thank you. I have a motion.
How do we accept the recommendations?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider requests of Chief Financial Officer Ramona Thurman.
Please take them all together.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have eight items for your consideration this evening. Budget Amendment two-dash-forty-six is to provide funding for pay grade increases for Deputy Chief ADA and senior litigation ADA positions, as approved by the Board of Commissioners on April fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of six-hundred-fifteen dollars. Budget Amendment two-dash-forty-seven is to amend in revenue in the amount of one-hundred-eight-thousand-three-hundred dollars from school bus traffic violations, and to provide for program expenses to the vendor. Budget Amendment two-dash-forty-eight is to amend the budget in the amount of six-thousand-six-hundred-eighty-nine dollars to cover additional janitorial and dietary supplies for the prison. Budget Amendment two-dash-fifty is to amend the budget in the amount of ten-thousand-five-hundred dollars to purchase computers for the solicitors' office. Budget Amendment four-dash-seventy-nine to amend the budget to purchase communications analyzers for system performance monitoring and equipment and services required for site security for the Public Safety Digital Network Project, in the amount of one-hundred-eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-three dollars, and this is from SPOS two thousand and nine funds. Budget Amendment four-dash-eighty-one is to amend the budget in the amount of five-hundred-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-two dollars for construction of the Rex Road Improvements Project, using SPOS two thousand and nine funds. Budget Amendment four-dash-eighty-two is to amend the budget in the amount of one-hundred-twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-forty-seven dollars for construction of the Point South Parkway Sidewalk Project, using two thousand and nine SPOS. for construction of the Point South Parkway Sidewalk Project using two thousand nine SPOS funds. And the final item is a request for a release of demolition bond in the amount of five hundred dollars made payable to Green Circle Demolition. The purpose is releasing a demolition bond posted to clean up of the lot at the property located at eighty-two thirty-one Dixon Court in Jonesboro, Georgia.
Is there a motion?
Sound moved.
While seconding it, properly moving seconding, are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
The Board will now consider one request from Renee Bright of Human Resources.
Thank you. The District Attorney is requesting to eliminate a part-time position and create a full-time position of Program Development Assistant Coordinator at a pay grade seventeen. This position will work in the pre-trial intervention and diversion program. The funds budgeted for the part-time positions and the fee, part-time position, and the fees collected from the program will cover the cost of the salary and benefits.
Is there a motion?
Sound moved.
Is there a second? Uh, seconding it, properly moving seconding, those in, any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the Board will hear from our Chief Staff Attorney, Ms. Kristy Barnes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please take them all together.
Yes, sir. First is Ordinance Number twenty-fourteen dash eighty-five, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Chapter forty-two, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article Two, Fire Prevention Code, Section forty-two dash thirty-one point one, Adoption Compliance, to incorporate applicable state law recently adopted in the two thousand and twelve edition of the International Fire Code and the two thousand and twelve edition of the National Fire Protection Association one oh one Life Safety Code to reveal, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Next is Ordinance Number twenty-fourteen dash one hundred, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part Two, Chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One, General, by adding a new Section sixty-two dash forty-seven, keeping a disorderly place, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Next is Ordinance Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh two, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia as amended, specifically Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part Two, Chapter two, I'm sorry, Chapter sixty-two, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article One, General, by amending Section sixty-two dash three point four, Exceptions, to repeal conflicting laws, ordinances, and resolutions to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh three is a resolution abandoning property consisting of approximately zero point three one two acres of right-of-way, formerly known as Old Riverdale Road, and more particularly described herein, to authorize the Chairman to negotiate a conveyance of said right-of-way to the adjacent property owners and to execute any documents necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh four is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into an agreement on behalf of the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services with NC Pearson Incorporated doing business as Pearson VUE, providing for the terms and conditions under which facilities and services of a testing center will be established to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh five is a resolution authorizing Clayton County on behalf of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services to enter into an agreement with Southern Crescent Technical College to provide emergency medical services programs to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh six is a resolution authorizing the county to enter into a grantee, sub-grantee agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds on behalf of Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services to provide continuing maintenance and or replacement equipment for the Hazardous Materials Response Unit, to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement and other, and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh seven is a resolution authorizing Clayton County Juvenile Court on behalf of Clayton County to apply for juvenile accountability block grant funding to support therapeutic services for high-risk designated felony offenders assigned to the Second Chance Court Program to authorize the Chairman to execute the grant application and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh eight is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept a donation from Walmart on behalf of the Clayton County Parks and Recreation Department for the purpose of enhancing operations within the department, to authorize the Chairman to accept the donation on behalf of Clayton County and to execute any necessary documents and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one oh nine is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement to allow Yarleen Belazare to sponsor and host a Haitian Flag Day celebration at Clayton County International Park, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one ten is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept forfeited vehicles from Clayton, from Clayton County Police Department Drug Investigations to authorize the sale of such property in a manner as will be in the best interest of the county to provide for the dispersal of sale proceeds, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one eleven is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend an, an existing professional services agreement with Right-of-Way Partners Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which additional acquisition services will be provided to authorize the Chairman to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one twelve is a resolution authorizing the execution of three amendments to the utility relocation agreements with Atlanta Gaslight, Quest Communications LLC, and MCI Communication Services Incorporated to include a Buy America clause associated with the CW Grant Grade Separation Project to authorize the Chairman to execute the agreements on behalf of the county and otherwise to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreements, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one thirteen is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exercise its powers of eminent domain in accordance with provisions of Georgia laws for the purpose of acquiring certain properties for use by the Clayton County Department of Transportation and Development for the Godbee Road Widening Improvement Project to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one fourteen is a resolution to provide for the adoption and submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of the Clayton County PY two thousand fourteen Annual Action Plan to amend the Clayton County PY two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, and two thousand thirteen Annual Action Plans to amend the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents required to submit and implement the Annual Action Plan and the amendments to the PY two thousand eight, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen Annual Action Plans and Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number twenty-fourteen dash one seventeen is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a facility use contract with Clayton County Public Schools providing for the terms and conditions under which the county will use a school facility to host a public meeting to discuss public transportation to authorize the Chairman to execute the contract and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And finally, we have an order for remission in the matter of State of Georgia versus Terranica Boatright and free-at-last bail bonds in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I move that we accept.
Is there a second? Uh, second. Properly moving second. Are there any questions on any of the items?
I have a question.
Mr. Edmison.
This question is more specifically for the Chief. Chief Porter?
Chief Porter, come forth.
On Ordinance twenty-fourteen dash one hundred, the proposed Section sixty-two forty-seven, help me understand. Under Section B, Section Two, it says, "Among the circumstances which may be considered." Help me understand the scope of considerations. What other considerations?
Commissioner, what we did was, we took the state law and tried to mirror the state law under, and which has already been vetted through the courts as being constitutional under Herbert versus the state. With that, we also, we did an analysis of, of, of a number of calls which were very problematic to, to the county and the community. Those called, such as occupant a dive, such drug activity, no, uh, noise, disorderly conduct, celebratory, gunfire, gambling, et cetera.
Aren't those already illegal?
Yes, sir. What we did, we added real property. Uh, under the state, they have a residential only that applies to this. We added real property, which involves a bar, a resident, gambling clubs. It, it added businesses.
Cars?
City in.
Cars?
Yes, sir.
Boats?
Bars, bars, B-A-R.
C-A-R.
Bar, a bar.
No, I understood. I'm asking, does it include other real properties, like, for the definition of tax purposes, like cars and, and vehicles?
No, sir. Just more or less dealing with the hu, human element, the people who are, who are there. We're trying to hold the, not only the property owner, but if, if a renter has the, uh, control of the property, we're trying to hold them accountable as well so they can't pass it back and forth, uh, between.
I think I get the intent there. So, I'm going back to my question. So, what is the scope of circumstances specifically that you are referencing? Or are you saying that this is not exclusive?
Real property, property.
Among the circumstances which may be considered in determining a violation, well, I assume that means the officer on site that's responding to the call.
Yes.
So, what other circumstances? My, my concern is that this is very broad and allows a lot of discretion. And I, and I got the, the handout of case law you guys handed me before the meeting, but my, my concern is that, show me why this is gonna be better for the county instead of having very broad discretion and, and without specific definitions or specific scope.
Again, Commissioner, we're trying to concentrate on those areas that we have deemed problematic and, from a, a community perspective. With that, we are including what we, what we've identified as a dive. A dive includes drug activities. If we're getting calls.
Does it say that in the proposed ordinance?
Yes, sir. Habituation of regular disturbance, illegal activities to occur. And, and we're gonna do that through, you know, through nine-one-one calls. We get.
Okay, wait, wait. Where does it say that?
Section B, one.
Allow habitual or regular disturbances or illegal activities to occur. So, how do we define a regular disturbance?
We track that through CAD system. The number of calls we received at that particular location.
So, a hundred calls is definitely regular.
Yes, sir, and it applies.
Is five calls regular?
If, if, if it has other component, other violations with, again, we, it might be a situation.
One call regular? I'm saying, help me define what regular disturbance means.
More than one.
Because I'm thinking this is very broad.
More than one call, uh.
Where does it say that?
Habitual. Habitual mean more than one.
Habitual or regular disturbances?
Yes, sir.
It doesn't say habitual and.
We, we can modify.
So, going back to the definition, it says, "Among the circumstances." So, go back to my original question. Help me understand specifically what circumstances.
Again, receiving the nine-one-one calls, going out there, uh, confirming that we have an actual crime there. And I think discretion there comes through the court.
So, where does it say that? Because I don't see that. It says, "Frequency of citizen complaints." So, if I'm calling my neighbor, calling the police on my neighbor because they have a loud stereo, that's not, in a, that, that may not be categorized as the quickest nine-one-one response because of other priorities. And I, and I understand that. So, you get there maybe a couple hours late. Maybe the stereo is on, maybe it's not, maybe there's one person, maybe there's not. I understand the case law that one person doesn't count as disturbing, but... So, according to this, that's among the circumstances. It doesn't say that it has to be responded to. So, as long as I call on my neighbor a couple of times, you can write them a ticket?
No, sir. We're gonna have to have other, uh, si, uh, other incidents where we, we compile that information.
And that's my point. This doesn't say that. So, I'm wondering if this isn't poorly written and a little too broad in, in scope and interpretation because it doesn't, you, you just said it. We should have other instances, but this doesn't say that. Or maybe I just can't read it, and you can show me where it does.
Again, we just, we constructed this based on the community outcry through, uh, tips off, uh, tips and, and, and meeting with the community and, and, and just more or less calls in general. We're trying to, we were trying to be, uh, take a robust attitude as it relates to this particular issue, uh, occupant a dive.
I appreciate it. I think I get it, Mr. Chief. I really do appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I know there's a first and a second on the floor. I'd like to make the request that someone consider amending that to, to hold this until it can be further discussed and, and, and rewritten if necessary.
Okay. Making, uh.
And what, what ordinance was that? Speak up, please. I can't hear you.
Twenty-fourteen dash one hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, that's your motion to amend.
I don't believe I can, help me out with it, with, with, with the Roberts rules. Can the person who made the motion amend it to exclude this and table this, or hold this, or delete it? Or do I need to make a motion to the motion? What's easiest?
You can, the person that made the motion can modify his, I think, the Chairman made the motion to approve. Commissioner Rooks made the motion. The Commissioner Rooks can modify her motion to exclude Ordinance Number twenty-fourteen.
Shall I be willing to do that? I believe you two made it. Anyway, wait. Ms. Haywood. Well.
I'll, I'll move to, I think I made the motion. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Let me check. Uh, yes, you did.
Okay. Um, since I made the motion, I'll move to amend and remove Ordinance Number two thousand fourteen, one hundred from consideration in the recommendation that, in the recommendations that Ms. Barnes made this evening.
And I will second that. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Now, we need to vote to accept them.
I thought that you were making your.
Motion to pull it out.
And I thought your, your motion was amending that you wanted them all.
To move, to remove it.
To pull just that one out, but that the rest of them were, that were approved.
Right.
So, we're good.
That's a general motion, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We need an executive session for personnel and litigation.
Okay.
Okay, and lastly, we have an appointment to the Clayton County Housing Authority Board. The term of Kenneth Gilmore expires on the eleventh of this month. New term is for five years expiring, May eleventh of two thousand nineteen.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the Board from Mr. James Phamborough.
I'll second Mr. Phamborough.
Properly moving second. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Three to two of Commissioners.
But three to two in favor, and then.
In favor of, with Commissioners Singleton and Hambrick opposing.
Opposed, okay. All right, and we have no further business to discuss. We need a motion to go into executive session.
Stand住了.
I'll second, properly move to second. Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.